Rennie.
President.
We have a call, Mayor.
Leading his call to order. Commissioner Lucas. If you would let us in the prayer and pledge, please.
You would stand with us. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank for this opportunity we have to come together. We ask that you bless our city, bless us as we make decisions that are in the best interest of all those that live in this great place. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda and executive session announcements. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I would like to amend the agenda. Item 11A should be Rennie, not Anderson, is the person who brought that to the board. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye. Public hearings certified tax rate fiscal year 21, 22. Mr. Collins, I'll let you start with that.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. As you may know or may not know, for the city to adopt its tax rate, you have to have a public hearing on that. Typically, we do that as a part of the agenda where we review the budget and approve the budget. That will be done on June 17. Given that this is a tax or a property revaluation year, we want to be very clear in what we're doing with the property tax rate. The budget that I proposed to you formally two weeks ago and that you have under your consideration for two weeks from tonight offers no change in the city's tax rate. We're at .8765 or eighty-seven point six five cents per one hundred dollars of appraised value. We anticipate that that rate remaining the same after the valuation is going to generate somewhere between five hundred, maybe five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional property tax revenue to the city. So if we make no change, that's the number. That was what I outlined to all of you at the budget work session and at the budget presentation that we had two meetings ago. So with that, if the city is going to engage in a property tax where property tax revenues are increased after a revaluation, we're required to have a public hearing to disclose that there will be no property tax rate change and the property tax revenue will be increased. The residents will pay more. Property owners will pay more. The city has not changed their rate. In fact, the city's property tax rate has remained unchanged since 2015. So the city has not raised the rate at all. What has happened is the city's property tax revenue will increase simply because there's been a revaluation of property conducted by the county and that revaluation has generated higher property values from which the assessment is created. So with that, I wanted to take just a minute, and again, the public hearing is for the public to speak, obviously, but I want to kind of give everyone a little bit of an understanding. I know we have limited time, but just to explain kind of where we are, what are some of the thinking behind what we're doing. So just in general, I'll read this off to you, but for the City of Fairview Certified Tax Rate General Information, the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 city budget includes no changes to the city's current property tax rate of zero point eight seven six five, which is eighty-seven point six five cents per a hundred dollars of assessed value. Due to recent countywide property revaluation, keeping the city's property tax rate unchanged will result in higher property taxes being paid by city residents. Your property was valued at a hundred thousand dollars and now it's valued at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Obviously, you're going to pay more on the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar valuation. So that's how we arrived at the increased revenue. That's not an action the city took. That's just the result of the property values increasing. How much will property tax revenues increase and why is this necessary? Current estimates are that city property tax revenues will increase by approximately five hundred thousand dollars. The increased revenue will be applied to the city's proposed 2021 bond issued debt service, capital investments, and infrastructure improvements. Some of you received your property tax valuation card in the mail and it explained what your old property value was and what your revised property value is. So you can work from those numbers and find out what your actual property tax increase percent would be. I've heard anywhere from thirty percent, twenty percent, whatever the number is, and there are a couple of ways that's brought about in general terms. My home, where I live, has been in existence since before 2015, since before the last property tax valuation. So over those five years, my property tax valuation increased by thirty-six percent, thirty-six point eight percent, in fact. So if you look at the value that was placed on my house in 2015 versus what it is today, that's a thirty-six percent, almost thirty-seven percent increase in my property value. For properties that have been here less than the six years, then their property tax increase would be less than the thirty-six percent. Example, there's a Fairview resident here whose home has been in existence for about two years. Their property tax value increased by about twelve percent. They've not been here for the full five years or in that home for the full five years, so they didn't experience the thirty-six percent increase. For every year they've been here less than six, there's a percentage less than that. Knowing that's where we are in that process, to ensure that our budget would be whole, we worked off a number of twenty-five percent as best we could. It's a little easier to come back to the board and say, hey, board, we overestimated revenue so we can accomplish some additional goals, rather than go back to the board and say, we underestimated revenue. We've issued bonds based on that under valuation and now we have a bit of a problem. So we've simply erred on the side of conservatism as it relates to the revenue that would be brought in. So with that, what work will be financed with the proposed bond issue and what other work will be done? Generally, three bullet points here. Number one, the bond issue estimated at eight to ten million will have an annual debt service of approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand per year. That's a big number for the City of Fairview. Eight to ten million dollars are a whole list of projects we need to work on. We'll get in that in just a minute. But in looking at those numbers, that would be a thirty-year bond. In reviewing some of our numbers and also considering some of the federal stimulus money that we know we have coming our way for some stormwater work that can be done, we're going to work to see if we can dial that back from a thirty-year bond to a twenty-year bond and accomplish some of the same goals. Committing the city to a thirty-year debt is somewhat uncomfortable. We currently pay debt service on the 2014 bond issue and it's uncomfortable today. It doesn't pay out until 2030. So what we want to do is to make sure that we are generating the revenue we know to cover the debt, but not have the debt be so cumbersome as to be a problem for those who come after us. They should be able to see the benefit of the work that was done and not experience it as a difficulty for having to address the financial burden that it may present. So we're hoping to dial that back and from a sheer time of debt issue standpoint, length, so we can be careful with our future revenues. Second, the bond issue is intended to pay for road and bridge projects, park improvements, and public safety improvements. Road and bridge projects are pretty important for us. We know Chester Road must be rebuilt. It can't just simply be resurfaced. It's going to have to be rebuilt from the ground up. We also have some road widening work that we're going to have to do for future development. We know that Northwest Highway is going to require significant work. We know that Old Nashville Road is going to require significant work. We know that Crow Cut Road is going to require significant work. And we have a handful of bridges and under the road storm drains that are going to have to be replaced. They just cannot sustain the load that's being put on them. And when I say load, I don't mean a stormwater load. I'm talking about roadway traffic. We have some substantial bridge replacement work that we're going to have to do. And then as we get into that, before we go to the next slide, before we get to the other work, just to kind of run down the list, I did just a brief valuation of just simple resurfacing that we're going to need to do over the next eight to ten years. Only resurfacing, nothing else. From our calculation, looking at the streets, the city streets, we know we would need to resurface. It's thirty-three point six miles at a cost estimate of seven million, six hundred thousand dollars for a resurfacing estimate of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per mile. To put that in perspective, the road work that we resurfaced this year through the state street aid, we expended two hundred and twelve thousand dollars this year in state street aid money for resurfacing. It bought us one mile and fifty feet. So if we were to continue to do one mile and fifty feet with the current revenue we have from state street aid, it would take us thirty-three years to resurface the existing streets we have today. There's no way we can accomplish that. That's not fair to the resident. We're going to have to find some way to work in that resurfacing. The capital plan for this is, should we see an increase, should we be at five hundred and fifty thousand instead of five hundred? Or should our bond issue be four hundred thousand instead of four twenty-five? Then we're proposed using that excess revenue for the capital so we can go back and do some of this standard 101 basic city service work we need to do, which is resurfacing. That's just a cost of doing business. We know we're going to have to do that. So lastly, the remaining revenue, as I just discussed, will go toward capital, infrastructure, and maintenance, primarily roads. The rebuilding of some roads are work that we're going to need to do. The resurfacing of our roads, we simply can't keep up with it two hundred thousand a year at a time, two hundred thousand dollars a year at a time. There's just no way to do. We're going to have to find that revenue somewhere. I'll also submit to you that property tax revenue is generally the only revenue, substantial revenue, that the city can control. We can't control our sales tax revenue. The sales tax revenue is capped by state statute, so you can't increase sales tax revenues once you meet the threshold, and we are at that threshold. So the only way you have to adjust revenue of any substance is through your property tax. It's the only thing you can control. One would argue we control building permits. However, we can't control the rate of building that takes place. So you can raise your building permit fees, but what you can't do is raise the number of buildings being built. So with that, you're kind of at a stalemate as it relates to the revenue that we, in fact, can control. So with that, this is a little bit of the work that we're looking to do so everyone can kind of get an idea of some of the need that we're talking about doing. The proposal that I submitted in the budget and in the last two discussions about that, as it related to the property tax revenue, did not include any increases in operational costs. We did not apply a single dollar of that to personnel costs. We didn't apply it to salaries. We didn't apply it to operations. We didn't apply it to fuel. We applied it all to capital in the budget, and that's what I proposed to you tonight to consider. So this is one of the things we would have to look at. The road, which we'll get into a second, is one issue. This is on Horn Tavern Road. This is a storm drain that runs under Horn Tavern Road. This is the condition of the storm drain today. That's not sustainable. We're going to have to remove all of that, and there are two dozen of these across the city. You have a corrugated metal pipe that runs under the road. Clearly, it's failed at some point at the asphalt level, so we've gone in and put rock over the side of the road and asphalted over the rock. That's not a fit. That's a patch that becomes a problem as soon as it washes out. So, next slide. This is the other side of the road. That's the inlet that goes in. I will tell you that the city's right-of-way only exists about two feet off of each side of the road, so we'd have to buy some right-of-way to do this work. But you now see where the water goes in. You can see the debris that runs through it. We've done the same thing on the shock rock. There's no guardrail. There's nothing that prevents anything bad from happening there. So we know that work needs to be done. That's not something that we thought about. That's one of several. Again, that's on Horn Tavern Road. So, next slide, please. This is just east of the storm drain or under drain that you saw. This is a bridge. It's actually a box culvert under Horn Tavern Road. The reason that I parked the vehicle there is because it's a little more than one vehicle wide. Not only do we have an issue with the water that runs under there, with the maintenance of that, there are no guardrails on either side of the road, and it's less than two vehicles wide. I don't know that I'd want to drive a fire truck across that box culvert, and I'm certain that we do.
Is that on this side, on the driver's side of the car behind? Is that washed out or was that the patch you were showing us early?
The patch is behind you. The patch that I showed you earlier is two hundred feet behind you. This is the next bridge up.
Okay.
So this one is a box culvert. It's a concrete box that runs under the road. There's no metal pipe. Now, you can see to the left as you're approaching the bridge as we're looking at, you can see where the asphalt's failed. And we've had to patch that thing, so that's a part of the drive lane or the one and a half drive lanes that you have. Also, if you look at the back tires of that GPOC, a patch on the access point to the box culvert itself. So these are standard maintenance items that cities must do as a part of their general infrastructure maintenance. Next slide, please. This is an example of a road width where we're going to have to do some work. Now, this example is similar to other examples on Northwest Highway, on Old Nashville Road. This is on Northwest Highway. You can see a couple of issues with this. First, is we've attempted to install a patch there, but what you actually have is the root structure of that tree growing under the road such that you have to go around the root structure, to go around that hump, just to navigate the road. I'll also tell you that the asphalt width at that spot is seventeen feet wide. Our city standards for asphalt require twenty-two feet width of asphalt. So again, it's an area where we know some road work is going to need to be done. You could take this same picture, pick it up, move it over to Northwest Highway. It's the exact same way. We have substantial work to do on Northwest Highway. I'm sorry, Old Nashville Road, that we do here.
So would that tree need to be removed and the road widened?
That's correct. That's correct. And the same would be for Old Nashville Road. We would need to widen all of the road. We'd have to purchase right-of-way to get it to fifty-foot width standard, then rebuild the road for that. Right now, we believe we have right there about twenty-four feet of total width. So if we were to go back and do this work, we could widen the asphalt, but then we wouldn't be able to install a storm drain or stormwater on either side of the road. So if you widen it in its current form, then you create a flood hazard because you've got ponding on the road. Next slide. This is the bridge. If you're turning off Highway 96 on the Northwest Highway, this is the culvert that goes under the road. Again, it's one and a half, really one and a third lanes wide. You'll also notice the degradation of the asphalt itself. So as we're crossing the road, we've had to patch this in several areas, but that's also caused the box culvert access to degrade. You can see, if you look to your right, you can see about middle way up the guardrail, you'll see where the asphalt has collapsed. There's a spot there that's fallen into the box culvert. So when we talk about widening or replacing the bridge, this is all work that we're going to have to do and find the resources to do. That project alone, if we were to just do only that project and widen the bridge, five hundred thousand. Round figures.
Is that also the road we're planning to change the intersection when it hits 96?
Correct. Directly behind us or to your left if you were to go up. So that will require some right-of-way purchase as well. Just an example of work we know we're going to have to do as part of just general capital maintenance. Next slide. This is Cherry Hill Lane, just over off Cumberland at Chester Road. The reason I show you this is not only do we have issues with infrastructure, but we have some rebuild issues in other areas. This, if you walk it, almost is to the point that you need a weed eater to cut the grass in the middle of the street. It's just a failed roadbed. There is no roadbed there. These are all old county roads. When the subdivisions were built, they were built to design standards of thirty or forty years ago. With that, we're going to have to go back and rebuild these things. You can't simply resurface that street. The seven point six million we mentioned at the two hundred and twenty-five thousand a mile would not cover milling all of the streets and rebuilding the roadbed. So in addition to just the standard resurfacing, we have general neighborhood streets that we're going to have to resurface and do some work on. So having these funds available, we intend to put them to good use, but we have definitely good uses for those. So, next slide, please. This is in Castleberry subdivision. It's the example of standard road maintenance 101, which we'll get into more in just a second. But this is where clearly there was a phase or a piece of resurfacing that was done in phases. So what happens is when you do your resurfacing in phases, if you're doing an entire subdivision, you can cause issues with the tack coat or the base coat if you don't put all of the layer on at one time and do that. So this is an example of where asphalt ended. Another section of asphalt to resurfacing began. It's gotten back to the base coat. You can also see that the asphalt layer on there is very thin, the wearing layer. So when that was done, there was some issue about whether or not we actually inspected that to make sure we got our standard amount of asphalt that would have been installed at the time and do that all in one spot, so we're not going through the phasing of it. When we're talking about the phasing of a subdivision, to prevent this in the future, if we're talking about Castleberry, I ran the numbers conservatively to resurface Castleberry. If all we're going to do is come in and resurface the subdivision, and I would argue that it needs to be done, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the number we're looking at to resurface Castleberry. So to put that in perspective, if we were to take the money that we spent in 2020 and not spend it on anything else for resurfacing, take the money we spent last year and not spend it on resurfacing for anything else, it would take us a little over two years to do no other resurfacing work across the city, save every penny of our resurfacing money for two and a half years to resurface one neighborhood. Just the reality of where we are. Next slide, please. This is also in Castleberry. Another issue that we have with the inability to maintain roads is if you look on the right-hand side of the road, you'll see a patch of gravel. You'll see grass growing in that gravel and just past that gravel is a storm drain inlet. It's in the curb itself. There's another storm drain inlet across the road. All of that gravel is what's left of the road. All those areas where you see the road that's degraded, the asphalt has come apart, including the middle of the road, as you can see here, has made its way to the side of the road. So what's happened is because of the road conditions in some of our neighborhoods and why this is important is when you have water running down the street to get to that storm drain inlet, you're going to have ponding in the area because the stormwater can't make it to the storm drain inlet, which is problem number one. Number two, if you get a rain that's heavy enough to wash debris down the street, you're actually washing your asphalt into the storm drain, which is going to cause stormwater issues once that gets hit there and backs up the stormwater system as it exists today. That asphalt has to go somewhere. If it stays, there's a ponding issue on the road. If it goes into the storm sewer or stormwater infrastructure, then your stormwater infrastructure can't function as it's supposed to function. It will cause backup everywhere upstream. So when we talk about the need to do this work and the importance of the work that we want to do with these increased revenues, these are real needs. These are not wants. These are needs, obligations, in fact, that the city has for this work. Next slide, please. Same. This is in another intersection in the same subdivision, Castleberry. When you're on the corner, there's a cul-de-sac to your right. What you see in the middle of the road on the right is all gravel that's washed down from the high spots. The lane to your right is the pothole effect where it's washed out. The side of the road to the left, you'll see gravel that's blocked the access to the stormwater inlet, and you also see grass growing in the stormwater inlet, which indicates it's holding sediment. Next slide, please. This is Crow Cut Road. We are just between Highway 100 and Deer Valley Downs subdivision. This is if you're headed back toward Highway 100. It's just a strip of road. We know that this work's going to need to be done, but this is road base work. This is not just resurfacing work. This is going to be milling work that we have to take into account. And again, it's just another standardized road. I will tell you, as we talked about that, in the seven point six million dollar figure that I put together, I did not include resurfacing for Cumberland Drive because it was done a few years ago, but it's in good shape. It also does not include resurfacing Cots Pike because Cots Pike is in pretty good shape. So those are the two primary thoroughfares we have. Everything else needs some substantial work. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we know we're going to need over time is some investments in our public safety. One of the things that we're going to propose to you is investment in a police firing range. Police firing ranges are a part of training, just like the fire department does some of their work for their fire training. Not only is this important regionally, obviously across the country for law enforcement, but I would reiterate to everyone that in the last four years, our police department has been involved in two fatal shootings. The idea that shootings and that firearm training isn't relevant is a misnomer. It is relevant. With that, our police department has done an exceptional job with their training, their work. However, we don't have a place to train. We borrow an off-site location for firearms training and we've experienced the worst possible outcomes and the most really difficult outcomes that you hope you don't get to. But the inability to train on our own property, on our own time effectively, really hurts some of the work that we do. So when we talk about some of the needs that we have other than roads, this is a need that we have just for the basic services. If we're going to be in the police service, we're going to have to invest in some of these types of infrastructure. It's just where we are as a community today. Next slide, please. One of the other things we're proposing, you have a resolution before you tonight regarding some funding for the playground at Bowie Nature Park. The proposal you have in the resolution is six hundred thousand dollars from the bond issue that we'll look to do to be invested into the playground. That's what it looks like today. Next slide. This is what has been proposed and been accepted by the BOC, which was last year for the development of that. That image represents six hundred thousand dollars in the bond issue work we would do, and that bond issue work will be paid for with the property tax revenue that comes in. So we're trying to be good stewards of that. We understand that paying more in property tax is not comfortable. We're not suggesting that it is. I would suggest to the board and to the public that we've attempted over the last few years to be very mindful with their dollars, given where we were a few years ago, where we had effectively no money in the bank. We had no reserve. We had a budget that was in the negative. Our police and fire training had budgets of zero and we had no maintenance of our playground. Transition today, we've invested in our police and fire training. We've done the work. Now we need the facilities to support that. We're supportive of the playground work or things that need to be done. There's a mechanism in place for maintenance after that. But, and with that, we've also gone from not only having no reserve and owing the school facilities fund four hundred thousand dollars to balance the budget, we now no longer have the school facilities fund. There's zero owed there. We have a million dollars in reserve and our staff, as of today, for the budget report, you'll see in a minute, is looking to be about ten percent under budget for the year that ends June 30. So we're working very hard to be respectful of the dollars we have. We're working to make sure we're operationally sensitive to the needs we have to operate a community, but looking at the community through the lens of infrastructure investment that we need to do, these dollars won't be wasted. These dollars will be rewarded through the investment that we proposed to you tonight. So that's all the information I have to you regarding the public hearing. I know this is open to the public, but that's the information I'll provide to you regarding the justification for that, and I'd be glad to answer any questions anyone may have.
If you want to have any questions, the city manager.
And I would just remind you, the public hearing is open if they're
Yes.
members of the public.
Public hearing is open. If anyone else would like to speak on this, you can come to the podium. If you'll give us your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Al Tareoli. It's Shepton Park in Fairview. I'm not disagreeing with the tax increase. I understand, you know, the need for that, but I just have a question regarding the numbers, one number that's regarding the numbers, one number that's being presented. I I talked to the assessor, the county assessor that sets the certified tax rate, okay? The current tax rate is .8765 cents per $100 assessed value. The certified tax rate that I received from the assessor's office the other day is .6461 cents, okay? Now, the sheet that the PDF file that they sent me shows me the current tax year and the proposed tax year. So, if you take and the whole thing on a reappraisal, I mean, the certified tax rate is the truth in taxation law, okay? The reappraisal and the assessment increase should not increase taxes. So, if you take their tax rate, the certified tax rate, okay, that they the county has determined, which they are required to do for the county and all the cities in the county, if you multiply that by the new tax assessment for the city of Fairview, you come out roughly $300 total property tax increase for the whole city, not an individual, okay? So, that's that's what they're required to do. They're required to generate a certified tax rate that keeps the taxes equal due to reappraisal. Now, the city or any taxing jurisdiction can raise the taxes like Fairview wants to do and it needs to do because it has all these things that it has to accomplish. My question is, the tax rate, I believe, I mean, that's what was passed on the first hearing of the budget, is still the same, is .8765 per $100 assessed value. Now, if you multiply that by the new assessment for the city of Fairview, okay, I mean, and this is from the not my numbers, it's from the the city, the county assessor, you come up with roughly $2.8 million that will be received by the city, okay, for property taxes. Now, the number that's being shown is 2.5 million. Okay, so that's roughly, I'm sorry, it's 270, $2,750,000, okay, which is $250,000 more that's being shown as far as being raised by property tax. And so, my simple question is, what is this extra $250,000 gonna be used for? Because it's not in the budget. It's not, you know, it's it's not in the line item of property taxes received. And so, the budget's gonna balance out at the bottom. But, you know, the city will have at the end of June 30th of next year, an additional, according to the assessor's numbers and what the property tax rate is, will have roughly roughly $250,000 more. So, my question is, you know, has that been earmarked for something or?
May I answer?
Yes.
As I answered in the in the work session, Ms. Trelle was there. And as I've explained just a few minutes ago, I'm not convinced that there's gonna be $800,000 extra that comes in. Again, I know what my rate increase was or my valuation was, and it was 36%. I also know that not every property in the city was valued at the 36%. So, with that, I believe the number's gonna be something less than that. So, we've used the average, as I've explained to everyone, which was the 25%, which we think is reasonable. We're relatively sure it would generate that amount. How much more over that, we can't be sure. So, as I explained in the most recent work session, as I explained in the previous discussions of this, we do two things to safeguard those discussions. First is, we amend our budget at least once a year. So, the fact that it doesn't show up in the proposed budget is not so concerning to me because once we actually get those dollars in, we get through February, and we know what the actual receipts were. If there's a receipt of dollars increased, then we will reflect that increased number in the amended budget. So, it's not as if it will just vanish. If it materializes, it will show up as revenue. And if it materializes, it will show up as either a capital expenditure in a revised or amended budget or in a a transfer of funds to the reserve fund. So, if the dollars show up, they're they're not invisible dollars. If they show up, then you'd have an amended budget that shows the revenue, and you'd show a capital expense or a transfer to reserves, one or the other.
Okay, I I understand that. But, I mean, this year's budget, the current budget, I mean, last year's budget, I should say, I mean, I think you budgeted 1.9 million. It's somewhere it's around $2 million expected in property taxes, right, for for the 2021
Yes, sir.
tax year. Well, that's the amount that the current tax rate would generate based on the assessment for the city of Fairview, you know, by the assessor's office. And so, now, they come out with a new assessment, and somehow, I mean, I understand that you don't wanna you don't wanna go to the limit, but $250,000 is quite a bit of money. And I understand the reason for the tax increase, but it'd be nice to say, hey, you know, if we get $100,000, $200,000 additional, this is physically where it's going to go, whether it goes into the, you know, if the playground is built, whether it goes into the, you know, depreciation for 20 years down the road. I won't be here, but you guys will be or someplace else, you know. It it's just that the number this year here is $250,000 more based on the assessor's number. I mean, he's telling you what the assessment is with all the adjustments. That's the number in this in this file that I got. And it's $2.8 million, I'm sorry, $2.75, 200, $2,750,000.
Right, Ms. Trelle, I I again, and I'll explain to everyone, those aren't invisible dollars. If those dollars, and that's if those dollars come in, I I'm comfortable at the 500,000. I'm not comfortable at 800. I'm not comfortable at 750. I may be wrong, and that's fine. But what I'm not comfortable more so than doing is committing to the board an expenditure of any type for revenues that I'm not relatively sure are gonna materialize. So, as I've explained to everyone, my suggestion simply is, and my action will be, that once we get through the collection of all of our property tax revenue, if whatever that revenue is, will be recorded as that revenue. And if it's more than what we budgeted, that amount more will be reported to the board, and that money will either be sent to reserve or a budget for capital.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I believe we amend the budget pretty much every year in the mid-year. Don't we look at it again?
We do. We do. We try at least once a year, sometimes twice a year. And and again, I understand the concern. There's no question about that. But this, these are always challenging. And there's a big commitment on the horizon for this capital, for this pond work, for these other things. And I would much rather report back to you, it generated more than what we thought. There's an opportunity for other work, or maybe an opportunity to decrease the rate. I'm not I'm not sure what you would do. But the the suggestion that a proposed number would be, in fact, is concerning. I just, I'm not comfortable promising you that that number. Once the dollars got here, absolutely yes, that's a valid conversation. But I don't think I can honestly sit here tonight. I know the math. I know what we generated. I know what the various increases to some of the properties have been. And we're just simply trying to be conservative to ensure that those needs are met. And if there's news to be reported to the board, it's positive regarding cash and give you decisions to make that are positive decisions rather than be negative regarding cash and give you decisions to make that are negative decisions.
Is there anyone else here to speak on the tax rate? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on the certified tax rate. Citizen comments? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jason Hoster.
Hello, sir. If you'll give us your name and your address, please.
Jason Hoster, 7810 Chester Road. I just want to kinda paint a visual here. You're a new resident of Fairview. You just spent anywhere from $300,000 to $400,000 on a house. You don't have any time to go ahead and spend the night in that house to really get make good, you know, feel for your environment. You take it right around the town. You experience the restaurants. You experience the stories. You talk to some people. Everybody says it's a great place to live. You close down your house. You move in. Now, all of a sudden, you have a barking dog, right? I work in IT. I spend every every moment at home. I, right now, like, when, what should I say? When we first moved to Fairview, there was zero noise. The only thing I heard were the cows behind the house. Now, three to four hours of my day are spent listening to barking dogs. Now, this was given to me by the police department, and this is supposedly the ordinance. It says, regarding pets, the keeping of any animal, fowl, animal, bird, or fowl by which causing frequent or long-continued noise shall disturb the comfort or repose of any person in the vicinity. That is incredibly vague. So, my question is, is like, what constitutes a nuisance pet? What what recourse do homeowners have when it comes to comes to a situation like this? I've I've talked to animal control. They get numerous complaints every single day regarding barking dogs. The only thing they can do is no is is notify the the pet owner. That's all they can do. I've called the police. They can't do anything between 10:00 and 6:00. Now, I ask the question, who arbitrarily came up with the timeframe between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the morning that this is the this is the only time that this ordinance can be enforced? So, you know, with that with that being said, it's like, I don't I don't have any recourse. I said, you know, I I work at home. I'm disturbed all day long, three to four hours a day. And it's not just one dog. I can I can yell at my neighbor's dog. Boom, they they take it inside. But then again, I have three, four, five other dogs around the around the surrounding area that I have to listen to all day long. And there's no recourse that I can take for that. And I'm not just speaking on my behalf. There's new homeowners in the area that are dealing with the same problem with the with the nuisance barking. It's nonstop, and we have zero recourse. And once again, it comes down to there's no timeframe in this ordinance where this shouldn't be shouldn't be enforced. There's no timeframe in here saying that it can only be enforced between 10:00 PM and 6:00 and 6:00 AM in the morning. I was also told on the phone by the whoever answered the the phone at the police department that construction ordinance is written in the same manner. I would have it right here. I disagree. There is actual timeframes in this construction noise ordinance when it comes to the erection of buildings and whatnot. And it's it reads as between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM on weekdays, except in the case of urgent necessity. So, why is there a timeframe, you know, for building operation, but we have no timeframes at all to invoice these nuisance pets? And we have no recourse against these owners regarding these nuisances. Thank you.
Can you tell me your address again?
7810 Chester Road.
And which house is that?
It is mine. It is closer to Cumberland. So, basically, it's it's up around the corner, just past Totty Court, second house on the right. And I said, ideal, I said, my, it was completely quiet, but I said, you know, I understand people. You want a pet, fine. But when a pet is allowed to do 30, 40 minutes nonstop barking, and it's not barking at anything other than the air. I have, you know, video evidence, you know, I said, going, you know, and like I said, watching the dog just bark at the back door just because it wants to get inside. And like I said, we have we have no recourse, so.
Mayor Sullivan, if I may.
Yes.
There there are two issues there. Number one, the construction is related just to that. Construction noise is different than a pet noise or some other thing. It's also a little different disturbance type than than the pet. That's why the two are there. Secondly, as it relates to not having any recourse, that's in fact not true. The the police department is somewhat limited, in fact, significantly limited, by enforcing an ordinance where there's a violation if they don't observe if it's a misdemeanor. So, in this instance, someone calls the police. The gentleman calls the police. I'm not suggesting they have or have not. Call the police. Officer rides through. There's no barking dog. There's no thing. It doesn't meet the noise ordinance. There's no enforcement action that the police officer can take. You can't write someone a ticket for speeding if you didn't observe them speeding, right? That doesn't mean that the property owner or or our guest tonight can't enforce anything. If there's a violation or an action that constitutes such a disturbance, he can petition to have a summons issued by the warrant clerk and he be the petitioner against the property owner and the dog owner. And I'd be glad to put you in contact with the magistrate to assist you with that process. If you just make sure the police department has your contact information before you leave tonight, I'll get that information to you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And if you'll see me after the meeting, I have some information that might make you very happy.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson? Public announcements, awards, and recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Staff comments and monthly reports. Chief Humphries? Good evening, sir.
My presentation will be nowhere as impressive as Mr. Collins'. It'll be a lot faster. For the month, with personnel report, we are still staffed at 23, no vacancies. We do still have one on deployment, but are happy to say the three that were in the training program have completed and satisfied all those requirements and are out on the streets on their own now. So, you should see those new faces out there serving the public. Training hours, we're down a little bit for the month of April. We had a big month in March, a lot of new year-end stuff, beginning year stuff we're trying to get accomplished, mandated stuff. We're down a little bit training for the the month of April. Next slide. The calls and stuff initiated, about almost the same, 8:49 to 8:23, stayed consistent for the month. That's generally a slow month. They are a little bit higher than that normally. Next slide. Activity arrests were up a little bit. The domestics went down, thank goodness. One DUI for the month. Drug charges were down just a little bit. Fast up just a slight tick. Citations were consistent. They're 33 to 36. Traffic accidents, 23. Property damage, and that was 21. Two injuries. And again, glad to report most month, there were no fatalities. Next slide. Last one slide. All right, I'll add a little bit. The public relations side of the slide, we, now that we're back to giving presentations, and now we do the child safety seat, that we've seen an uptick in that, and we're glad to do that. We just want the people to know that they don't have to just come to the police department. They can call, set an appointment. We'll come to them, and we will do that. Child safety seat installed for them. The last thing I have is, I know that the kind of the buzz in town last month was the the bank robbery. The FBI was the lead on that. A lot of people had questioned that. They were the lead. We assisted them. But again, a unarmed bank robbery in Fairview, Tennessee probably didn't get the full weight of the federal government. So, I do wanna recognize tonight that our detective, Joy Cox, was just relentless in his pursuit. There's literally no evidence on scene, and he stayed at it until he discovered the the suspect. The suspect was apprehended off that. We're proud of that. I'm gonna do a commendation letter for his file, and I just wanted to recognize him tonight on that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Finance report?
Mayor, members of the commission, I distributed to you tonight, you have in front of you a final clip package of documents that shows the revenue for the month of April and expenditures for the month of April. Our revenues are a little up from where we thought we would be, not a lot, a little. From our last report, our expenditures for the city, we expect overall for the city's expenditures to be about 10% less than less than budget, which is good. June is the our, May is the, June is the last month of our fiscal year. So, we're already transitioning into closing out the year. The budget year starts July 1. So, this will be the last month we have for this year. We will get May reported to you next month, June, the unaudited report, the 1st of August, and we'll start right into the audit after that. As all of you are aware, if some of you are aware, I love an audit because it highlights the things we're doing right, and it reminds us of the things that we could use some improvement on. So, we look forward to that every year. I know I do. Tom thinks that's a little quirky, but we we very much use our audit as a budgeting tool, and that's worked for us in the last few years. So, we look forward to the year end and another positive year. The last three pages of the information you have are our bank account balances. We're up again year over year, April 30 this year versus April 30 last year. Also, not included in here, but just as a reminder, our reserve fund, which is an account separate from our checking accounts, the balance as of April 30 was $1,300,000. So, we're we're sustainable in that reserve. We have been since we created it, and our cash position continues to be strong. If you have any questions on any of that, please feel free to let me know or email me. And again, I have all the actual cash deposit balances at the back of your binder documents you have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Planning report, Mr. Sullivan?
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Just a quick slide on planning. Building permits for for the month are up. Over the year, we had 10 last year, 19 this year, and then so far for the year, we're at 84 up in at eighty-four up until, uh, the end of May this year, so that's up from sixty last year. Uh, it's a little bit small of a number on the bottom, but the, the past thirty days, we've had a hundred and twenty inspections. Brian Bussell right now is doing most of the residential inspections, and he is staying busy with that. Uh, we've, we've had some good, positive information coming back with him, uh, stepping up and doing that, so, wanna thank him for that, but he has been busy, uh, I'll flip through a lot of times and just see what the daily counts are, and, uh, he's, he's got quite a few going, so, uh, that's where we are with that. Uh, Tuesday night is planning commission meeting, that agenda went out today, I did put on there a joint BOC meeting, uh, before that with a work session, so we do invite, uh, the five of you to come out for a work session before that meeting to discuss the development. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Micah. Public works report.
Yes, Mayor, I'll combine the public works report with, with the city manager report. Um, public works report, all's, all's quiet there, we're still staffed at three, obviously we have the ability to add two staff members in the, in the proposed budget, we look forward to having, uh, those hires made and to get that work done. Um, we got a couple of calls this week, our chipper, uh, went down this week, as you know, we have one chipper that runs the city, typically it's reliable, it has a few years of service on it, it, it works really well, but we did run into an overheating issue with that, we had to send it out to Nashville to get some work done on it, that took a couple, a couple of days, got that back in, so the guys have caught up, um, through today, we'll do some chipping work tomorrow and they'll be back on the standardized schedule next week. So, um, if you get any questions about chipper, debris still out there, anything in, uh, the current zone, which is zone one, um, should be picked up, um, no later than tomorrow. Uh, as it relates to other information, you have on the agenda tonight, um, can, first read, our consideration for a fresh reading for our commercial zoning reclassifications. Uh, as soon as we finish the commercial zoning reclassifications, and this is a substance of it tonight, we'll get right into the residential, get that work done so we can move into the, um, land use map, but that work is continuing, it's, it's an exhaustive amount of work, it's not quick. But it's, it's going about as scheduled and about as planned, so we'll catch up on both of those and, and the first phase of that happens tonight. And then lastly, as you're aware, we discussed a couple of meetings ago and over the last couple of meetings, the use of the federal stimulus money that's come in, we're aware of the primary use for those dollars, uh, will be stormwater, stormwater management. Um, we expect to get a total of two point four million dollars, two million four fifty, over the next twelve months, those dollars must be extended, expended in total by December thirty-one of twenty twenty-six. As soon as we confirm the receipt of those dollars, um, Kevin and I will get to work on a stormwater management plan and stormwater, um, um, improvement plan through our infrastructure, so we can put that, um, those monies to use and start getting that work underway, so we would anticipate, um, work on stormwater to start, um, as quick as in the next ninety days, we have a couple of projects we know we need to get underway, so there won't be any delay in, in getting those projects done, and we'll present to you the full proposal, um, at a, at a meeting, once we get to that point, my suspicion is within the next ninety days or so. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Collins? Hearing none, item none, consent agenda, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to, go ahead. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item ten, old business, we have none. Eleven A, new business, city insurance carrier consideration. Um, at the last meeting, uh, Vice Mayor Anderson brought up a problem with our insurance carrier, and I had asked Mr. Collins to find out if there had been other complaints and what he could find out about the status of their performance. So, Mr. Collins, do you have that?
Yes, Mayor, um, members of the commission. Mr. Mills and I met with representatives from Public Enemy Partners, uh, Tuesday morning to just go over the general concerns discussions that we've had, um, they're aware of some. So, uh, in going through those, they, they provided me back an email today, I'll read that to you, and this will be their, their, a response to the inquiry that we made, just general, length of service, number of complaints, that sort of thing that we had, so.
Okay.
Um, their, their reply, their email that they sent back today reads as follows. It says, Public Enemy Partners has a longstanding relationship with the city of Fairview, which goes back over twenty years. In the past six years, Public Enemy Partners has settled sixteen errors and omissions claims resulting in settlements over one point eight million dollars. Of those claims, this is the first complaint, uh, regarding the way, um, a ten ninety-nine is or was issued. Public Enemy Partners has requested that documentation be sent to them stating the error in the ten ninety-nine, and until they receive it, there is nothing more, uh, that can be done. Uh, that email was sent to me today at four seven PM from Cali Westerfield, Director of Member Services with Public Enemy Partners. So that's, that's the information that they sent to me, um, and that's the information I was asked to relay to the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any follow-up questions, or Mr. Collins? Okay, hearing none, and I guess the insurance situation is good. Eleven B, resolution zero eight dash twenty-one, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee regarding sponsorship recognition on the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park commemorative plaque.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mayor, just briefly, the, the purpose of this or discussion of this came about with, um, the ability to, um, be recognized for substantial donations that were made to the playground. As you're aware, there was some discussion back and forth about, um, naming rights for certain, um, donations to the park, equipment, that sort of thing, um, the board rescinded that resolution in favor of developing another program to recognize, um, those donors. So what would happen is, in, in this instance, and you've seen the thresholds before you, um, when the playground is constructed, we will have memorial commemorative plaque, um, that obviously is substantial, just as you would see on any other, um, building, um, worthy of recognition, a courthouse, any other thing where you see, see those things, so we'll have a plaque similar to that, and it outlines all the participants, um, that had substantial roles and substantial donors by the amount or threshold, and that will be given, um, that recognition through there. So this will be a permanent plaque, um, that will carry with the playground, twenty years from now, when the playground's rebuilt or refurbished or what have you, um, then that plaque would remain, the life of that plaque would go with the next playground and the next, just like, just as we're trying to do with the bricks, uh, for the money that were raised at the last playground, so, um, we want it to certainly be reflective of the work done in the community, we think will be very tasteful as it relates to, um, its inclusion with the playground, so.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
New business, eleven C. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you could read the resolution.
Resolution zero nine dash two one, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee regarding funding and construction of the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park.
We've heard the reading of the resolution, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. One of the things I'd like to ask, I noticed in the resolution that funds from the Friends should be turned over by December twenty-nine, twenty-one. Could we, I would like to suggest discussion about changing that date to end of June this year. It would be the beginning of our budget year, it would be there when we got ready to do the bond issue, is there a specific reason why we're waiting till December?
Mayor, the, the discussions were, um, the receipt of funds raised generally is, is how we arrived at, at this discussion, so what we talked about was, was trying to establish, um, cash on hand versus cash pledged or dollars pledged, as it relates to the budget in actual dollars. So the December twenty-nine date, um, really wasn't specific to the Friends as, as much as it was specific to all dollars raised on behalf of the playground outside of the city. So how we arrived at this, to make sure that we, that we enter into a construction phase and follow up with a maintenance phase, how we arrived at the December twenty-nine date was, um, so that when we, um, identify in the first week of January what the true budget for the playground will be and true dollars available, we would have on January sixth, is it, um, as you, as we see on here, um, all dollars from all sources in hand, cash in hand from any place that's being held in the name of the construction of the playground, be remitted to the city by December twenty-nine. So when we report back in the first week of January, we can take the monies committed by the city from the bond issue and the cash on hand, not pledged dollars, but cash on hand, put those two piles of money together, and that will be the total construction budget for the playground. That was, the purpose was to give whoever, whatever group enough time through December twenty-eight effectively to raise dollars, deposit it on December twenty-nine. The reason we didn't pick December thirty-one was because the banks will likely close early, if they're even open, so we wanted to make sure that every dollar that's, that's in cash the city's holding, will come in January, the first week of January, identify those cash deposits, combine that with the money from, uh, the bond issue, whatever that total is, will be the construction, any dollars that are remitted to the city for the playground after December twenty-nine would not go to construction of the playground, they would go to future maintenance of the playground. At some point, we're gonna have to figure out what the playground's gonna cost, that's really what we're trying to get to. What dollars do we have, what knowns, and that's how we arrived at that thing, so that's where we arrived at the December twenty-nine date, for all money, it's not specific to one agency.
My only concern is this, um, as most of you know, Derek Burtz and I did a fundraiser, I keep saying last year, I forget we lost last year completely, and we have requested that money be, because the Friends was held and, was holding that money for us until there was a playground fund established. So we have requested that money that they were holding for us from that fundraiser be given to the city playground fund. We've not gotten a response from the Friends about, I mean, we have sent an email requesting it be moved, so I guess my concern is, is there any guarantee that that money will get to the playground fund for the city?
The, the city doesn't have the authority to compel anyone to direct any private dollars to the city for, for this thing, so, um, as much as I'd love to be able to give an answer, um, whatever funds are being held privately, the city can't, can't make someone remit those dollars to the city, that will be between the contributor and the holder. Um, the rea, and that's the reason why we went to an established date for all monies to come in, so that we could consider everything that was out there, come to the city for the construction. So unfortunately, the city doesn't have the authority to, to compel anyone holding dollars raised outside of the city to, to, to do anything with those dollars.
So there's no MOU or anything with the Friends?
There's not.
Okay.
There's not.
All right.
And the city did have a, a meeting with that particular nonprofit, which I thought was very, um, a good meeting, I think everybody left feeling good about it, whatever, and I think that, that date was discussed and everybody felt confident in that, so I think it was good feedback.
So, so with that, let, just quickly, just let me run down this resolution, because this resolution has some important notes, thresholds, there, there's some things in here that are substantial as it relates to the playground, and there are a few whereas's and be it further resolved, um, but I just wanna make sure everyone understands that whereas's and the further resolved, because once we adopt this, this is kind of our plan going forward, um, so I'm just kinda, I'm gonna read it verbatim and make sure everyone understands, so. Um, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee regarding funding and construction of the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park, whereas significant efforts are underway to secure funding for the new Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park, and whereas there's an opportunity for a significant amount of funding for this project through the city's proposed series twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, bond issue, and whereas there is also an opportunity, um, to use donated funds for this project, and whereas the most recently proposed date of completion for the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park is July one, twenty twenty-two. Um, we previously discussed July two, twenty twenty-two, however, that would be the grand opening on the July third, July fourth weekend, so we'd wanna have it completed at least the day before. Um, so with that, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview as follows. The city of Fairview Board of Commissioners hereby resolves to commit six hundred thousand dollars from the series twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two bond issue to the construction of the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park, and be it further resolved that the final project budget for the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park will be comprised of bond proceeds and other cash on hand held by the city and committed to the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park construction project, and will be set by the Board of Commissioners at the Thursday, January sixth, twenty twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting. And be it further resolved that any person, organization, entity, community group, or similar agent that possesses any money raised and or otherwise held on behalf of the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park shall remit the entirety of those funds to the city of Fairview owner before December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, and be it further resolved that the city of Fairview will deposit all funds remitted to it for the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park construction project into the city's Bowie Park Fund Checking Account, and be it further resolved that all funds raised for the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park and remitted to the city on or before December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, are hereby committed to the Treehouse at, Tree Play, Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park construction project, and be it further resolved that any funds remitted to the city for the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park after December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one shall be committed to future maintenance of the playground and not to the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park construction project proposed for completion on July one, twenty twenty-two. That's the entirety, two typos, which we'll, we'll address, I'm surprised there aren't more, um, but there's, there's a lot of work that went into that. So if this, if this passes, and I hope that it will, um, that outlines our roadmap financially going forward for the playground, construction and maintenance. Uh, the only other questions that would remain would be outside of the, the resolution or outside of the city in the event, um, Mayor, that you or any other person had remitted dollars, um, to be held by another agency, then you can simply request that they, um, transfer those dollars or remit those dollars to the city, I believe there will be an obligation on them to do that, there, anyone else that just simply, um, holding, holding someone else's dollars, and I would think whoever raised them could request that they be, um, held wherever they choose.
Any other discussion?
If, this is kinda, this is a little further down the road, you may not be there yet, but at what point do you initiate contact with the playground installer? Cause I know, I remember there were some notes about three to four month lead time on materials, maybe a two month install, do we wait until that January when we have the funds, or you're gonna go ahead and kinda tee it off?
Did that last Tuesday.
Okay, good, awesome, materials are weird right now, so.
We're trying to get ahead of our, our hope is that we would have everything.
Awesome.
Secure in place, done, um, by the end of October.
Good work.
To give us some time to do all that, so as soon as we had the conversation last week, I reached out to them to, to start the process, so.
Awesome.
Other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Eleven D, ordinance twenty-one dash fourteen, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, an ordinance to establish an updated occupational safety and health plan, program plan, devise rules and regulations, and to provide for a safety director and the implementation of such program plan.
We've heard the resolution, is there a motion to approve, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins, you gonna read all this to us, too?
No, Mayor, I'm not, unless you direct me to do so. Um, we're requested by the, the state to put together, obviously, our, our, um, this document which outlines our safety officer coordinator and, um, assist us through OSHA requirements, we already have a safety director, um, that is, um, our. We already have a safety director, that is our fire training officer. The fire training officer serves as a safety director, that's reflected in this document, so no change for us, we have it named there. So, this is boilerplate information that they've requested us to do at standard, we suggest that we do it. There are also addendums to this that are suggested, documents or forms for safety-related operations, we've also previously adopted some of those, and we'll amend those as well. So, it sounds grandiose, there are several pages of what sounds to be pretty serious information, operations they are, but luckily, we have the majority of that already underway, we're just formalizing their request to put it in their, in their language.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I can, so, Mr. Collins, reading through this document, which is a very long document, I think it's always good to revisit safety policies, safety protocols and so forth. One of the things that I've seen in the document and that you were discussing was a committee that is going to be formed for accidents, for example, that happened or happened in the city, which, you know, it's always about prevention of the next accident, which is also being responsible to the taxpayers. So, I think this is great, I think it's progressive and certainly needed. Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments?
Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
11E, ordinance 2021-15, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Ordinance 2021-15, an ordinance to amend Section 8 of the city of Fairview zoning ordinance for the purpose of establishing defined commercial zoning districts.
We've heard the resolution, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Collins, do you want to speak to any of this?
Mayor, it's all exactly as previously discussed. We worked through this at the planning commission, in fact, there was a resolution passed by the planning commission after a couple of meetings, requesting that this formally be done by the Board of Commissioners. This is the first of two readings for those. We've simply created our commercial zonings to be more like uses, anything that was previously or is currently CG, commercial, general, would be so. This is not a rezoning of any properties, this is a reclassification of the zoning. So, in the future, if there's an effort for someone to zone a piece of property, commercial, then these would be the commercial zoning standards that they would have to be, and they have to select one of these, these would be the new commercial zoning standards rather than the single commercial general.
Any other discussion?
Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Communications from the mayor and commissioners, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the staff for that last commercial zoning district, and I know residents to come, and I know that is almost the end of a very long and tedious process, and also a very good step for us as far as our zoning. Thank you for the great presentation earlier for the public hearing, just kind of seeing where the dollars are going, how it's going to be spent, it's great to see and great to inform. And then this Saturday, first month, first Saturday every month, the Keep Fairview Beautiful Group meets out here at 9:00 AM, they go and pick up trash from miscellaneous areas around the town, so they'll be meeting this Saturday at 9:00 AM. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Dawson.
So, I think it's great to see the fruits of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and this ordinance that was passed tonight is the first of many steps of fully implementing the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, something that we have needed for a long time and that we will definitely need as we grow as a city here in the future. So, that's really good to see. Also wanted to thank once again Detective Cox for his great work in taking care of business here with the issue at the bank, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Lucas.
Nothing to note, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
I would just like to thank the Treehouse Playground Committee and the friends of Bowie Park for all the fundraising that's been done. I mean, it's raised a whole lot of money lately, and I'm just, I'm so excited that I saw everybody come together and work so hard for that, and I appreciate everything that y'all have done. Second, I always like to say that let's all, you know, work together to keep Fairview beautiful. We need to pick up trash and not pitch it out, so I just like to say that every meeting because it's just really important to keep our community, you know, as pretty as we can. Thank you.
I'd like to second that, and I think really to thank Stacy Greathouse for his push to make us all more aware of where our trash is going and doing such a great job with that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.